Oh, regular, regular, I said regular JD called the word in.
No, he said public.
I don't believe, I don't believe you all.
Roll back and take.
Councilman Quainer.
Here.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harold.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Present.
Councilman Conrad Maynes.
Here.
And Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So, wait a second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The prayer of this evening be given by Vice Mayor Gann. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. And also during this time too, JB, Jason Brown, over recreation. His mother is, has been ill and, and has been in the hospital for a while and just have a moment of silence for her. Patty Stewart. And, and yeah, and also the passing of Patty Stewart.
Our Father, we thank thee for these that have gone before us, who have made this place a better, better place to live and a better place to serve. We pray for these that need your guidance and your healing hand, and we pray that you would be with them. Father, we know that we live in a special place and we thank you for that. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us every single day. We pray that you be with us as we try to make wise decisions about how our government should be. We pray not only for ourselves, but for our county and our state and our nation as we try to resolve many of the problems that we're facing throughout our country. Lead, guide, direct us now, give us the courage, the direction, and the guidance that we need, for it's in that name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Larry. Here a motion for the review and the approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated March 27th, 2023.
So, wait a second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize visitors or citizens? Any praises? No complaints today? Everybody good? Communications for the mayor, I have a few things. First of all, we have a, I think this is the second annual pause for the cause at Carden Farm Park. That is on the 29th, which is this Saturday, from 10:00 to 4:00, and that's at Carden Farm Park. It's a great event. I think they're going to have over 50 booths and everybody bring their dog, who has a dog, and hopefully we'll have good weather. But again, just want to let you know that will be from 10:00 to 4:00 on Saturday. Also, I'd like to congratulate the police department for getting the K-9 body armor donation. That was a state, was that a state grant?
That was actually a grant through, in Chicago, Illinois, a firm up there gives out.
Okay. And also want to thank Paula Ferguson for, for writing that grant. I guess she's, since she's from around that area, we had a leg up on that, so it was nice. Also, last but not least is the Anderson County Chamber of Commerce funding request. Rick, would you like just to kind of, kind of talk about what's, what y'all's vision is and all that good stuff and what you're asking for today? I hate to put you on the spot, but you're used to it.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Rick Meredith, 422 Manor Point Drive, Clinton, Tennessee. See, yes, we've embarked on 90 years, as far as the chambers is, is that old, last year. And a part of that is just having a new facility. We have struggled, went place to place, been in the one. We are now since 1987, and it was part of the challenge in the board eight years ago, when I was hired, to get us a new facility. So, we have done that, we have partnered with the NBI, we have the drawings, I've sent those to Roger. It's an 8,700 square foot building. Probably the biggest model piece of that is going to be our boardroom, it's about 1,300 square feet. It will be used with the community and other organizations, industrial board, ACEDA, other civic groups that I've approached could use that room as well. It'll be a multi-purpose room, not just a typical boardroom. We'll be able to flip that room, do small luncheons and things of that nature. That's kind of the highlight of the facility. Obviously, it'll be located up here across from Knott's Florist on that 1.17 acres, the former Zen Hicks property, which has a little history to it as well. We're in the process of raising $2.6 million. We do have a large donor as a part of that, and the fundraising has been going exceptionally well. Did pretty good today. Hopefully, I can finish the night with a request from you guys of $25,000. I don't know what else, Mayor, if there's any other questions or something I've missed, I'd be glad to.
Any questions for Rick?
Rick, who all will be housed in there? Is there going to be your chamber team, but it's, are we going to have like a tourism area or?
Anderson County Tourism and Commission voted not to put tourism in this facility. That was part of the delay, we had to go back and redraw our drawings. ACEDA will be housed, and I think they've got about 1,000 square feet on one wing of it.
Rick, you of course met with us as Planning Commission and BZA, but might let people know the historical throwback that the building has as far as its construction and appearance.
Sure, thank you. What we did is the NBI pulled up some of the older pictures of magnet mills, back when it was really up and running. And some of the brickwork and all that will be reflected in this works, because we still want to fit in with historic downtown Clinton, not just a typical modern building. So, the brickwork will reflect some of that as well.
Rick, when do y'all plan on starting?
In the perfect world, we're almost there, we go to bid next week, that'll take about three weeks, and then we can open the bids. We're looking at mid-June, first of July.
Does that, is that dependent on fundraising, or is that just?
No, sir, we're already secured on our fundraising, based through Regions Bank.
So, the, what you don't raise of the 2.6 in donations, you already have funding for?
Yes, we'll borrow that, yes, sir.
You've got an operating plan to make the payments and?
Yes, sir.
So, are we the first stop on the civic, civic contribution train as far as the?
Civic calendar? You're the first stop, yes.
Who else has donated? What other government entity has donated to the chamber?
So, we have a request of City of Oak Ridge of $25,000.
They've not done that yet.
It is in their current budget, yes, sir.
Roger, how much do we give the chamber yearly as is?
Their annual contribution is 15,000 annually. And we started that, gosh, probably six, seven years ago. At one time, we were giving them 10 more thousand, that, that used to go for our billboards, to help with the advertisement, when we got out of the billboard business. But I think they've since gave that to the Historic Downtown Main Street program, and they're handling that part now.
About 15,000 is used for our retail recruiting.
If I'm not mistaken in talking to, to Mark at Oak Ridge, my understanding is that the plan at Oak Ridge is whatever we do, they'll match.
That is correct.
Is this something you want in a lump sum, or negotiable as far as how that's going to be distributed?
As I shared with Roger, I, we can spread it over, I'd like to do two years, if you do spread it out, or I'll take a lump sum, I, I can go either way. We'd like to finish all the fundraising up by the end of next year.
If, Rick, if we give this, this is like a one-time gift?
Yes, sir.
Do y'all have future, air condition goes down, you need to pay, all that's built into your operating budget?
That's all of our fundraising, as we created the foundation, that's all put in that, yes, sir. This is a one-time ask for this.
So, what he's trying to say nicely is you're not going to come back and ask us to chip in for a, a water cooler broke down and all that stuff.
No.
One time.
I have no point.
Could we postpone this for 30 days and let the, see mayor to get a little bit more information? Let's come back and discuss, let us have a little time to think about, discuss it a little bit? Could we put it off for 30 days and come back and?
Personally?
What's 30 day, I mean? I'm, I'm, I'm going to be honest, I'm not forgiving the chamber nothing. Not, I don't even think we ought to give them 15,000, we do. I'd like from them to tell us what they've done for us, because I don't know that there's anything out here that they've done for us. So, that's me, I'm not forgiving them a dime, not one dime. So, I'll be a no vote today, or a no vote 30 days from now, but I think it ought to be postponed. Councilman McBride's not here, and he, he should be here and have a part, that part in this.
We, you can certainly make a motion for that.
I'll make that motion, that we postpone it for 30 days and postpone it to the May meeting.
Have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
Mayor, I did talk to Councilman McBride today, which he's not here because he had a medical procedure done. He had asked me just, some of the stuff that Rick had spoke about, operational costs and some of that, if maybe they could give us some kind of plan in writing that all the council could see. He thought that would just make him feel better, also, to talk about, you know, the operational cost of the new facility. 10, 12, 15 years down the road, a roof tears up, heating and air unit goes out, you know, just what's, what's the plan to replace that stuff, type of stuff? If we could get something like that, and of course, he, he would be back for the next meeting.
Well, again, I think that's just kind of beyond our purview, that's not, I mean, he's just asking for a one-time gift of $25,000. It's not a maintenance plan that we have to, that we're going to be involved in. This is going to be a one-time, a one-time gift, if you will. I feel more than comfortable going ahead and going tonight, but that's just me, it, each is their own. Any other discussion? Let's do, so, yes would be to delay, no would be not, is that right?
Yes.
Good with you, David?
Yeah, it's fine, mate.
So, yes would be to, I'm sorry, I'm, yes would be to delay.
Yes would be to postpone that thing.
All of us do, it's not.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Yes.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
No.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Nope.
Councilman Maynes.
No.
And?
No. Motion fails, a four to two. Do I hear a motion for approval of the, of the $25,000 to the chamber?
I'll make that motion.
Having a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Couple of things, I think was, as we talked, we probably need to put some stipulations on it, or we'll do it one time, or is it going to be over two years? But also, I think it should be that, that we don't make the physical donation until they've got their permits and ready to break ground 100% to go with the project, just, just as.
I'd like to be in the motion to say that.
Can I answer your real quick question, you can, in a minute? So, what would you prefer us do, if it passes, do it, do it just a one-time, or do it, display it over two years?
Either way, I mean, that's, yeah, no, but I, I think we definitely, you know, due diligence, need to wait, make sure they get all their funding, that everything goes through, because something could fall through and, and. It's kind of like paying a doctor bill, once you pay it, your insurance pays, can't get it back.
So, if we're going to wait till, if we want to wait till all the permits are done, then I'd feel comfortable just doing a one-time gift. I think that'd be easier, just to, just going to give it to them and move on, unless somebody?
That's fine.
Once all the permits are in it.
Yeah.
Once everything's ready to break ground.
So, Bill, do we need to make one amendment or two amendments? Or make one and include that in one, in annual? So, Rob, why don't you make your amendment?
Amendment to, we're going to make one.
Yeah, just include the one time.
With all the permitting done before that.
In a one-time payment.
In one-time payment.
Here a motion on the floor, amendment? Do the amendment first.
Right.
Motion on the amendment, to wait for all the permits and do a one-time payment?
I second it.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Now, we go back to the original motion for a contribution of $25,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, one-time money, and the money would be given, I, I don't know if this is part of the amendment, but it'd be given at, be given at the time of permitting. Do I need to get a motion on that?
Anderson County Chamber Foundation.
Say it again?
Anderson County Chamber Foundation.
Anderson County Chamber Foundation. So, we, do you already have a motion in a second? Okay. So, this voted on the motion as amended, roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
No.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harold.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
And Councilman Maynes.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Motion passes five to one.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
That's all I have as far as communications from the mayor. Community reports, city school board report, Kelly Johnson.
Good evening, a couple of Clinton City updates. We actually are going to be holding a ribbon cutting tomorrow at South Clinton Elementary School at 11 o'clock. This is going to be for our ORNL FCU Media Center. And they made a donation in the midst of COVID to Clinton City Schools for $10,000 for us to create a new studio in Clinton City Schools. And so, we have a state-of-the-art new studio with three very high-tech cameras and a mixing board and green screen and a studio setup at South Clinton that will not only serve South Clinton students, but we can also transport kids from the other two schools to this to complete projects and such. And so, that ribbon cutting is going to be at 11 o'clock in the morning with ORNL FCU. And we have some sixth graders that are going to be demonstrating how to do a news production. They're going to be doing a commercial for our sixth grade graduation, so I'm sure you'll find that on social media later on tomorrow evening. Speaking of graduation, hard to believe, but we are fast and furiously ending this school year. So, graduation will be held once again this year at Faith Promise on May 25th. We are going to be doing North Clinton and South Clinton at 9:00 in the morning, and then Clinton Elementary will graduate at 11:00. So, we are, our sixth grade has grown so tremendously that we can no longer fit all of our parents and loved ones into one facility in Clinton, which is a good problem to have. And so, we appreciate Faith Promise for the use of their facilities. Big thanks to Catherine Burke Beck for a fabulous Mosaic Arts Festival on Saturday. I hope that you were able to come and see our beautiful artwork that the children did in Clinton City Schools. So, every single student had artwork displayed. And the theme for Clinton City this year was that Clinton City is in bloom, and so they were all flowers and blooms. And we did some flowers that you saw in the mulch that were absolutely beautiful. Then our band and ukulele clubs performed on the stage. And then we also had a STEM booth where our South Clinton STEM Club presented their STEM projects. And participants in the Mosaic Arts Festival was able to vote on which one was the most creative. So, that has probably been one of the highlights of our school year, just watching the kids and parents enjoy the art, and it was a great day. Finally, our TCAP testing is last week and this week, so we have three more days of testing. Second grade is done, three through five, will finish up on Wednesday, and then sixth grade will have one additional social studies test to take on Thursday, and then we will call it a wrap. And so, we should have those scores back towards the end of the May. And as you know, those scores will be used to help us to determine the third grade students who need to attend summer school in order to go to fourth grade. So, that law did not see any significant changes in general assembly, so we will be moving forward with following that law as soon as TCAP scores are released. So, those are my major updates, any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly? So, when are they supposed to get notification on for the third graders?
We have been notifying parents throughout the year if their child is at risk, based on last year's test scores and then this year's benchmarks. But we will be notifying, our raw scores are supposed to come in, I think, May the 20th. And so, we will be notifying them based on our raw scores, and they'll have an opportunity to actually retake that test. If they want to retake, then we will offer that to parents as well. But we've pretty much, if they're at risk, we've already encouraged them to go ahead and get signed up for summer school, so that we have programming in place for them.
Is this going to be ongoing, or is this just because of COVID?
No, no, this is ongoing.
This will be here on out.
This is ongoing, yes.
Do you foresee most kids being able to go to the summer school and being able to go into the, the next grade, or?
It is our hope, it is our, I mean, we have tried to communicate heavily with parents. They've tried to shift the language a little bit, that it's more of a support for promotion instead of a third grade retention, but I think what people hear is retention. Based on our third grade numbers, right now, we have about 50 students that in third grade that have signed up to come to summer school. So, that is hope for me, that most parents are going to take advantage of that. As per Clinton City Schools, we don't want to retain any third grader. We know what the research shows on retention, and it is, it is not positive. And so, we definitely want to encourage our parents to participate in all the supports that are offered, so we can move on to fourth.
Great. Any other questions?
And no Scott Ray tonight, because no budget amendment.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't make any comments during my mayor's communication, but we have an alumni here, I want to recognize, ET, good to see you, buddy. Jims, you can always come up here and sit, sit next to Quainer. Good seeing you, buddy. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Vice Mayor Gann.
The Clinton Board of Zoning Appeals and Regional Planning Commission met on April 10th. New business for the BZA, applicant Joe Mingus requesting special exception to allow 10 to 20 chickens for property located at 619 Blockhouse Valley Road. That was withdrawn, and I believe it's on the agenda for next month. And then set back to four feet, rear set back to two feet for property located at 605 Riverbend, property zoned R1. The problem here is that's about the only place they could put the storage house. And so, it was, it was deemed it was appropriate within the framework of what was there. The Regional Planning Commission, applicant W.J. Moore and Associates requesting final plat review and approval for a property located at 304 Lee Road, the property zoned R1. This was a re-division of property, and that was approved. Applicant Larry Noe, Church of God Prophecy requesting final plat review and approval for a property located at 112 Park Avenue. This is a new building across the street from the church on property they already own, and that was approved. Applicant Brian Flynn requesting site plan review and approval for a property located at 101 Ridgeview Way, property zoned M1. And this again was a re-division, so that was approved. And then applicant AWS Al Hadith, Anderson County Chamber of Commerce requesting site plan review and approval for a property located in North Main Street. This was passed, subject to a number of stipulations that had not been yet met and were, that were required before the final approval was granted. But it was approved on that basis. And I might also mention, I think we've talked about this, we have been discussing the fact that among the cities and municipalities and counties around us, we have one of the lowest fee structures around. And that we're probably going to look at that and try to catch up with what other counties and cities are up to, because right now, we're way behind.
Actually, we've got a meeting with staff this week to review those, and, and probably the next step will be bringing, bringing it to Planning Commission, maybe Mayor June, and then come to council for approval. But we are, they've been working on that, like I said, I've got a meeting that will present it to me and Bill later this week.
We are, we are woefully behind, I can tell this publicly.
So, they go back to Planning Commission, then to council?
I think it's right, yeah.
Any other questions for Larry?
Can you give me example on what we're, like what, what something would cost now and what you may propose?
I'm trying to remember what the county is.
Well, it's like plan reviews, I don't think we charge anything, almost every city does, some of the stormwater stuff, we, we're not charged anything, which is new, and it's become, as I said, we had the workshop becoming huge. So, it'll be some of the fees for, for some of these that, that other cities are charging, that we charge nothing.
We're dramatically behind the county.
Yeah. So, they've surveyed, that's what they've kind of done, would, want to be fair, so they've been surveying the other cities, see what they've been charging, counties, and we'll come up with some recommendations.
Green McAdoo, share with you, the Jazz on the Hill starts April, excuse me, May 13th. And they're going to have a gospel celebration on May 13th. That's the first of the Jazz on the Hill, those are great programs all summer, they are free to the public. Usually, there's some kind of food there, and it's always good food, no admission, they do pass the hat, but it's always great music and, and a great time, so encourage everybody. The first one is May 13th, and it's once a month, I think, planning on the second Saturday in the month. Usually starts around 6:00. And also, the ongoing Smithsonian exhibit up at the Green McAdoo on voting is, my understanding is from Adam, that it does, being very well attended, and it's a, it's a fantastic exhibit, if you hadn't got a chance to go look at it. And then also, you may be, not be aware, Adam and, and I forget the other organization, are doing podcast. They've already done a couple of them. They, first one was Trey Hargit. So, I mean, they're getting some heavy hitters in to, to do some podcasts, so. So, Green McAdoo is, is alive and well.
Great. Thanks Larry. Catherine?
ET's my cheerleader tonight. So, last month, when I was with you guys, I brought some high school students with me. They made it to the next round of voting and are actually in voting again today. So, if you will kindly, again, please go to actprep.com's Facebook page, like their video again, so that we can hopefully win the $5,000, we're getting closer and closer. Again, those students want to help plant some trees on Main Street, do some cherry blossoms and an art installation, so it would be a really great project to have them do. I want to say some big thank yous for the Mosaic Arts Festival. Kelly Johnson just said thank you to me, but it is a partnership with Clinton City Schools that I'm really proud of, so it would not be the same without their participation. So, thank you, Kelly. Thank you to Roger and Chief Becker, who ran towards the train when it came at the start of our race, just to make sure everyone was safe and off of the train tracks. You know, anytime you have a race, a train has to come through, and Chris ran in the race, so thank you for that. Thank you, Public Works, the street looked amazing for the day of, they were out there doing mulch, and they cleaned out the area that we had the event in. So, thank you all so much. I get credit for the event, but it does not happen without these partnerships, so thank you all. An event like Mosaic, we got to see the Clinton High School cheerleaders come, and they cheered on the band all day. The CMS Choir dedicated a song to a little boy who's been in the hospital for months now. Clinton City Schools, Clinton Middle School, and Clinton High School color guard got to perform together. And so, events like Mosaic, they give us the opportunity to let kids cheer each other on, collaborate, and love each other. And there is nothing more important than I do than that right there. So, again, thank you all for allowing me to have these crazy ideas and do that. I also want to say that we started our podcast with our Clinton High School students, and so thank you to Larry Gann. He came in and let the students interview him and his relationship with Reverend Paul Turner. I can't wait for you to hear it, it'll be coming out in the next couple of weeks, but you really gave them some great information. And when you left, they really were inspired by the history that you're letting them pass on, so thank you for coming in to do that.
My pleasure.
And last but not least, less than two weeks, we have the Antique Festival on May 5th and 6th. So put that on your calendars. I'm hoping for another beautiful day like Saturday was for Mosaic. And again, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions for Catherine? Thank you.
Thank you.
General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a update with an email that I'd sent out to you guys a couple of weeks ago on some legislative bills, Senate Bill 0526 and House Bill 0817, which was a companion bill. The state legislature has passed the bill, which will change the way some local elections are conducted. If the governor signs the new legislation, it will directly affect our election process and conflicts with our city charter. However, state law would override that. There are approximately 20 cities in the state of Tennessee, including Oliver Springs and Knoxville, that this will change. Basically what it does, and personally don't really have a problem with this, it, it makes you, right now, we have three wards and you run in your ward, but you're, you're elected at large. Everybody in town gets to vote for you. What changes that's where you run in your ward, but only people in that ward can vote for you. Which don't necessarily feel that that's a bad thing. I think what has upset a lot of the cities is this is a fact that we've got our state legislatures in Nashville kind of stepping in and changing our local laws and especially our charter, which usually is, is our local people can only do that. And, and you know, our feeling was if our citizens wanted to make that change, they had the opportunity to do it by their vote, not by the state legislatures doing it. And I did voice my opinion with, with our legislatures about that.
Is there any thought this will rescind or is this a all going forward?
You know, right now, I know probably the biggest city is Knoxville that's going to affect. And what I've been reading there is they're waiting to see if the governor signs it and they're going to possibly take legal action to prevent it. They did that with Nashville. The legislature's actually cut the Nashville City Council from 40 members down to 20. Nashville has sued and got an injunction so far, but I'm not sure where that's going to go. So it's not a hundred percent, but it's very well looking like it.
If it goes forward, it might be nice for us to know distinct ward boundaries because I don't know mine.
Well, right now, by, by our charter, the, the ward boundaries have to be by population, equal population for all three wards. And that's, I think it was early mid 90s, the last time it'd been done. So we started a couple of weeks ago when we were notified that this bill may affect us. Originally, TML, which does the lobbying for the cities and lobbying for us, thought this bill was only going to affect Knoxville. But I got a call, I think it was two weeks ago on Tuesday, when I sent the email out late in the afternoon to check our charter and see if it was going to affect us. And sure enough, we determined it would. So we started right after that, looking at some of our boundary lines because a lot of them are jagged, are not well defined. So we'll look, trying before the next election, which we got a year and a half, to have some better boundary lines drawn up. But we have, have to base them by population. So that's the first thing we've done is got a census of the town so we can look at it.
The only concern is, I guess, whatever is, it is it is, but we have, what, 10,000 citizens? And so what, most elections, what about 2,000 people?
We've been averaging around 2,500 probably the last couple.
If you break that down into wards, you may only have what?
Couple hundred.
Three hundred? Three or 400 people vote?
And it may discourage people not to vote if somebody in the ward.
2,500, it'd be closer to 800.
800, okay. Less than a thousand.
Still small. If you got a large family, you're in.
If they, if they live in your ward.
Has TML made?
I hope they don't live in my ward.
Has TML made a stand, a stance on this?
Oh, they were against it also, yes. Actually.
My problem is with that too is, and I'd say would happen, but it has a likely of happening, like, you know, back at, back in County Commission days, 20, 30 years ago, well, there were, there used to be alliances a lot where it wasn't really, but they were, they were doing what's best for the county, they were doing what was best for their, for their area. And sometimes our, towns like, like Clinton, so small, you have to look in the totality of what's best for the, for the city.
That was MTS' big argument.
So I hope, I hope that doesn't happen and I hope we've, we've gone past that. But it could, much more than, at, at, more than how it's set up today. So we'll see.
And I'm sure that some of those reasons probably why our former councilman and fathers of the city set it up that way many years ago within our charter.
Well, thanks for bringing up that.
Thank you, Mayor. Comprehensive pay plan revision. According to Article 6, Section 3 of the City of Clinton Charter, we have revised the comprehensive pay plan to better align employees' positions, pay grades and salary ranges to conform to current needs, as well as to be more competitive with comparable cities. To incorporate this revised plan for the 2023, 2024 budget, we request approval of the revised plan. Just a little history, Brandon Enzo, who was doing our fellowship through MTS, worked on this for us for a couple of months. I think he polled 13 cities plus looked at MTS' pay plan they did last summer. And we kind of came up with our new pay structure. We did have some realignments in, in trying to make a position in the fire department compatible to a position in the police department, same in recreation. If we had a mechanic in Public Works, put them in the same category as a mechanic in, in another department. So we did some realigning there. The big thing is it just brings salary up to what we feel is going to be a compatible level. For instance, right now, a police officer's midpoint, we have a medium, minimum, mid and maximum. Roughly a police officer, I'm sitting here looking at it's, under the current plan is just a little over 40,000 is their, is their midpoint. Under the new pay plan, it would be about 46,700. So it ups them. Now, our plan, the reason we have to do this with the new plan, it ups the minimum. And anybody that falls under that minimum, we want to bring their salary up above that with the, with the new budget. So that's why we need to do it before we submit the budget later this week. We've kind of put it in as a three-year plan with, with hopefully some pretty good pay increases over the next three years. Of course, three years from now is when we're debt-free and we'd be able to really do something because our goal is to get every city employee, which I said, it's a goal, every city employee at least up to that midpoint. And, and David can help me a little bit here because he knows one of the commissioners, two weeks ago, Rome County did an average 19% pay increase for their deputies, which was huge. It's my understanding, our sheriff has requested 1.7 million for his deputies from County Commission. So, and, and where we kind of got behind the eight ball, and I was thinking about it earlier today, you know, we went for three years, I think it was around 08, 09 and 2010, city employees didn't get raises. And of course, you know, the first years as I was city manager, trying to restructure our debt and our finances were not in very good shape. For I guess three, four, five years, we only gave 2%. So that's how we kind of got, got behind these other departments. Because at one time, the City of Clinton was one of the better, if not the best paid department cities around.
Only 2% back then was good for 2% though.
Well, that's all we could do too.
Well, I think, I think our problem has been over the years too is we, I think our starting salary's always been too low.
And that's, that's true.
And when you start low, you, you can't, you can't, you stay low.
You want to talk about, you would just talk about Rome County. We're not in the ballgame if we compare ourselves to what they've just done. Starting out for deputies, 51,000 or jailers, 48,000. So we're not even, I don't think this is, personally, I don't think this is enough, but I'll go with whatever Roger's recommending, but I don't think it's enough. I don't know if it solves our problem or not.
It's a good step, it's a step in the right direction.
Well, it might be a step in the right direction, but as soon as, if I'm coming here for 46 and I go down the road at Rome County and go to 51, I'm probably going to go to Rome County if I'm 24 years old. Don't really matter.
Since I've been on council, we've approved, I think, every pay raise that's been brought to us. And there was another pay plan in the past, but I would like to see us not always be behind. It seems like we're always playing catch-up and then you're, you're never caught up if you're always playing catch-up.
Well, that's what we had the conversation today is when I got thinking about that, why, where, where did we get behind? I kept thinking about some of those issues.
We kind of got behind because we had to get behind because it's where we were financially. But if we can fix it now, I think we should certainly try.
And just because I say the midpoint, I mean, in theory, I could go to the maximum, you know, that same salary I just gave you for a police officer, if I can find it. I said 46.7 is midpoint.
It's 54.
54.5 is, is the, the maximum. So there's nothing to say, and I, I've had that argument with several finance directors, of course not Chris, that, that you don't top out when you get to your midpoint. You can make more if you're, you're a good employee, doing a good job, you can make more than the midpoint.
What does it cost to train a, a new fireman, a new policeman? Because that's something that if we're losing people and you got to turn around and pay that training cost, why not retain good people?
Well, it is, it's, 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 it's an expense that we incur.
Do you have a dollar figure roughly what it costs to train up a new fireman, policeman?
It's thousands of dollars. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's up there when you build, I mean, you put the time in it, the, the TO training they have to do and it's.
But we thought about putting a contract on some of these people. They got to stay here for a certain amount of time. If not, they have to pay us back for some of that training.
We have that with the ones we send to the academy. I think we did three years.
It's a smart move.
I think three years.
Mayor, to your point about the 2%, it wasn't much. And I can tell you, I worked there when it was 2%. It was 2% and we took it because it was, because the county was getting 0%. That's how we were unable to stay and be one of the top around here. That's why people used to line up and want to come to work here for that, for that reason. So when we were getting 2, they wouldn't get nothing. And insurance was going up and our insurance was paid. That's why insurance has always been very important here to be paid for because it sort of offsets some of the stuff. And you have to look, and you do have to look at that.
Well, I think our biggest challenge is, and I'm not, I'm, I think health insurance is, is a, is a great benefit. But I think the, the, the great benefit we have is not seen by most people as a benefit. And I'm talking about those 24-year-olds, those 23-year-olds.
Correct, I agree with Harper saying that.
And that's, and that's, and that's the thing that we got to, is there anything else we can do differently to get that hook in on, I mean, for them to want to stay versus, they don't see the benefit in that until they get close, closer to our age. But it's very important now.
I can tell you how important it is.
Oh, yeah.
Look at the situation I'm in right now.
Yeah, it would be, it's, it's a huge, I mean, I love my, I mean, I'll tell you, my wife gets our insurance and it's $700 a month. And I'd, I'd like to have that in my pocket, you know?
Yeah, I'm sure you would.
I think we're paying, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, around 17,000 per employee for family coverage.
It's a great benefit, but unless when you're 24, I agree with you, you don't think that, I think everybody up here would agree with that. When you're 24, you don't think that because you're made of bullets.
Yep. Let me ask you a question back to that three-year plan. So is there a dollar associated as far as what we're going to be investing in raises over that three-year period? Because I'm sure you got to have some type of ballpark.
I, I don't want the employees to hook me in on this.
Jeff, Jeff, you need to leave the room, please.
I mean, the numbers that we've kind of ran, and me and, and Chris and I, Angela's worked on some, we've worked on, you know, over a three-year period, about a 20% increase is what we'd like to shoot for. Now, of course, like I said, and, and we're waiting to see what happens on some state money this year to what we recommend this year. Then, then next year will probably be, you know, an average one. Then of course, that year that we're debt-free and we have a million, million and four in less expenditures would be the year we could really do something. So you know, it's, it's something and, you know, I've, I've talked to some of the department heads, I'm probably going to have some staff meetings and, and ask these people, you know, tell them this is what we put in place and ask them to hang in there a couple of years.
So what's our total budget for payroll?
I don't know.
That's why I looked at Chris.
Roger, while he's looking, what I'm looking at, what's our percentage, if you even have that answer of like the increase that I'm looking at? Just on average, you may not even have that answer. Just overall, you've thrown these numbers out or is this where we are now? Is this where we want to be?
This is where we want to be. Yes, this is where we're at.
So would you say it's an overall 6% increase on average on, based off tiers or based off in positions?
Probably.
I thought you said, what was the 20% you, you thought about?
Well, that's, that's what we want to be when we get in three.
I'm just kind of wondering.
Is there a lot of difference in the old plan and this plan?
Basically, how far off are we?
Yeah, how far, how far off are we? I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it takes almost every position and ups their salaries considerably across the board from minimum to mid to max. And.
Do we have a ton of employees right now that's below minimum?
No, probably 20 maybe.
Yeah, we probably have to invest around between 35 and 40,000 to bring up people, if this pay plan is enacted, to bring the folks that aren't even at the minimum for their positions. So that's the level set, everybody. So I think somebody asked how much it costs to invest in that. That's the initial investment is, is you'll see about 30 or 40,000 annually to bring some folks up. And then, of course, as we bring new people in, they're going to start, you know, further up than, than we are starting them now. But through just the natural occurrence of raises and promotions, that, that would have been absorbed already.
So we're seeing a trend where we've got a lot of new hires in the one to three-year range because we're having some turnover.
Yes.
And we need to address that to get them to 10, 15 and want to be here.
And of course, when they, when they get to that point, you know, we put some other programs in a few years ago for longevity pay. But you know, somebody that's been here a year or two, $50 a year is not a lot of money. Somebody's been here 15 or 20 years, you know, that's a nice little check at Christmas along with, with their safety incentive pay and some of that. But once again, as you said, those one to three-year employees, that longevity pay is, you know, the goal was to get them to stay here 15 or 20 years with longevity pay to get that little extra boost.
Roger, on, on a side note to this and perhaps dealing with this, is there any movement on getting our sales tax back from the state? If we were able to get that, that back from the state, we could.
It died. The, the talk when we were in Nashville was passing it and putting it behind the budget, which was a new term for me. That was pretty much passing it, not funding it. But I think it got killed. You know, once again, there's some state money that we possibly use.
That would resolve a lot of these issues.
And like I said, there's a possibility we may be getting some state money this year that we could do a significant pay increase this year, but I just don't want to commit that. So I'm 100% sure what we will get.
Yeah, we need to push to get that money back.
Oh, I agree.
Good conversation. I think if, I think this is going to stir up some conversation with our employees, but I think it's good, it's healthy.
Well, I think we, we've got a lot of projects going on. We've vested a lot of projects, a lot of capital funds. And I think we really need to show our employees that we want to consider them a project and invest in them.
So any motion for approving this?
So moved.
Second.
I guess that's a yes. You got a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, guys. I love you. Police Department, I request authorization to purchase two new 2023 Dodge Durango patrol package vehicles from Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Columbia at a state contracting price from the police department's capital outlay budget for the patrol division at a cost of $79,184 and two marked vehicle packages with installation from On Duty Depot at a cost of $26,086. Little conversation, we did this last month, but we had some conversation before and after the meeting. We had two tow, two cars totaled last year, not to our fault. One of them was sitting out in front of the police department here and a lady came down the hill and we've got it on video, I don't know what she did, but she just came over and wiped the car out. And then we had another officer hit up on north, south, north of Charles, D.C., who was in total of those two vehicles. So really the two we bought last week kind of just replaced those two. So that's why we decided to go ahead and recommend to go ahead and get two more so we wouldn't get behind on our patrol vehicles. So that's why we decided to go ahead and recommend, go ahead and get two more so we wouldn't get behind, um, on our patrol vehicles.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Did we get compensated for the insurance for those?
Did we get any, Chris, or is that still pending?
The insurance for the two total vehicles?
Yeah.
That was a little bit before my time, I believe. I, I'm not sure, I'm sure that we would have, would after our, you know, less our deductible. But I, I'll, I'll be happy to check on that and, and let Roger know and he can lay it off.
Thank you.
Any further discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, guys. The Police Department has several radar units, patrol, pat, patrol radios, accident investigative data collection equipment that's obsolete and beyond useful life. We would request authorization to declare this equipment surplus for disposal in the best and most appropriate manner, either through gov deals or some of, probably just through recycling.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, Public Works Department, surplus vehicles and equipment. They have a nineteen eighty-five Chevy dump truck, nineteen ninety-seven Chevy dump truck and a two thousand Toro motor that we recommend that we declare surplus and placed on gov deal's website for disposal.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Recreation Department, um, our mowing contract. We have received bids for the mowing of Parks and Recreation facilities and other public facilities for the twenty twenty-three calendar year with an option for an annual renewal based on a review of the bids received. I recommend that we accept the bid from Abbott Enterprise Incorporated at the annual amount of sixty thousand, five sixty-five for the twenty twenty-three calendar year with an annual renewal option. We have not bid this out in several years. We had a contractor that we knew, for lack of a better word, we knew it was a sweet deal. He was charging us like twenty-one thousand. So that's, that's one reason we kept renewing with him because we knew it was a pretty good deal. But unfortunately, he has, uh, gotten ill and had to give up the contract this year. So we bid it out and we actually had to bid on it, but that was the little bid.
Was this the guy that's coming in and they can take care of it one day?
They're a pretty large company and he says he'll come in with enough men to mow everything we've got in one day.
Roger, just for public consideration, what, what all does this entail? Where are we mowing?
Off the top of my head, I'll have to do this because I don't have it and of course JB's handling it. It's, it's everything in the parks except the athletic fields. Um, it is the library, two fire halls, green macadoo.
Cemetery.
Two cemeteries, forgot about the, um.
It's at the Arberry too, isn't it?
Part of the arm, rather than the armory.
They doing behind Market Street, the new areas?
No, we're doing that. Um, a little history for, as you said, for people to know, twenty-plus years ago, these areas were never mowed by the Parks and Rec Department. The, um, Public Works Department did it. Um, when, when Public Works kind of changed over for more of, of a lot of construction, which they do very well at, um, we bid it out and I think the first time it came in, it was like sixteen thousand dollars. So actually, we couldn't even pay a person and, and that was one thing we considered. If it got too high, was, was hiring a position back to the Recreation Department. We took one away three years ago when we gave up the football field and the baseball field. Our consideration was if it got too high, go ahead and funding a new position in the Rec Department, which would cost us about sixty, sixty-five, seventy thousand, uh, versus doing the bid, which when it came in at sixty, we felt that was a better deal because that ba, basically salaries, benefits and all of that's going to run us around sixty thousand for an employee. But then you still got the equipment, the gas.
Insurance.
The insurance, all that stuff. So we still think it's a better deal, uh, for the city.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That's all I have, Mayor, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Roger?
We didn't make a motion on that. That last, we didn't make a motion.
Rewind the tape.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Motion in second? Any, uh, any further discussion?
Hang on, Mayor, I did, I skipped Chris's finance report.
Let's go ahead, can we close this motion?
Okay, go ahead.
I think this job's easy, it's really hard. Motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Need to defer to Chris for the finance, I forgot him.
Almost cut away with it.
If we're spending all this money, we better hear.
Yep, kind of the most important part, it's the money. Uh, so we're seventy-five percent of the way through this fiscal year, which is kind of hard to believe. Uh, revenues are in at the end of March at a little over a hundred percent of projected. However, part of that is that, that ARPA money, uh, so, but we're still doing well with our property tax, local option sales tax and the other, uh, the other, uh, sales, or excuse me, estate shared revenues. Uh, expenditures are holding at about eighty-three percent. Uh, this now includes a lot of the capital you just approved. So we're, we're doing, uh, well in our areas of, of payroll and then just general operating expenditures. Um, fund balances kind of remain the same. Uh, they adjust a little bit as, as revenues exceed expenditures. So we're at nine point eight if we ended the year today and unassign fund balances with a total of sixteen point four overall in reserves. Uh, I'll have a, a budget amendment for you coming up. Uh, if I could talk about local option sales tax real quick. We had a pretty good month again. We were almost fourteen percent over what we did the same month last year. Um, we are at three and a half million in, in revenue so far. Uh, I think we've only got, uh, we're probably going to be about a, a month's worth of revenues ahead of what we, what we projected. So we will probably meet the budget in eleven months' worth of, of revenues.
Looks like we're going to eclipse five million for the first time.
Yeah, and so you'll see that when we come out with our budget, that we're, we're adjusting that sum. We obviously, we like to stay conservative, we don't want to over budget revenue, but we obviously have to recognize when they're going up that much. Uh, someone asked earlier what our, uh, budget is for just payroll expenditures. It's, it's about five and a half million of the thirteen million dollar or so budget. So it's, you know, obviously, uh, people power is, is, is a huge expense for, for the city. So it's about, you know, not quite half, but almost half of the, uh, the expenditures for the city. Um, so if, if, if you have any questions on the financial report or local options, we have to answer.
Any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Okay, and I've got a budget amendment for you to consider.
Is that budget amendment number three? Would you like to?
Yes.
Speak on that?
Yes. Budget amendment number three is presented with, uh, an increase to expenditures of nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The offset of those is six hundred and ninety-three thousand is coming from your assigned for capital projects. A hundred and forty-one is coming from your assigned for street paving. And the remainder, uh, is coming from, the bulk of it, a hundred and thirty thousand, that is, is the V C I F grant that police got recently, a hundred and thirty thousand. And then, uh, just to balance it out, I looked at, uh, some revenues that came in above projected. So about, um, twenty-three thousand to balance out to recognize those revenues. So there's no, um, there's no decrease to fund balance or, or anything like that. It's recognizing more revenues pulling from our assigned, um, reserves as, as we had planned and then to, uh, put that money into mainly its, it was paving, its, uh, capital purchases. Uh, I think Dwayne got a couple of large trucks on this. This is to pay for the, the police vehicles that we've done. So, and then there are some miscellaneous, I took the opportunity to, to turn up some of your smaller expenditure goals. So it's a, it's a budget amendment, uh, asking for appropriation of nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and nineteen thousand.
Here a motion for approval of budget amendment number three?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Roger, you want to update us, anything going on with our grants across the board?
And I had a printout from my architect on the schedule coming up on some of them. He and Bill helped me, I left it in my office. He's supposed to have us the plans for review this week. So that's from our architect on some of our local, on our state tap grants. We've actually got a meeting scheduled with our, uh, engineering and architect for next Monday to review final plans for that. Um, we've asked some of the bucation committee to set in, they need help picking some colors out. I don't like doing that, so we'll let some of them. Once, uh, once we get that, where, where we want it and hopefully within the next, I, I would say three to four weeks, they'll be submitting final construction documents to T DOT. Um, and hopefully once again, we won't get held up. Our, uh, our, um, National Guard Armory, we're returning, trying to do some work there. We got the fifty thousand dollar grant with East Tennessee, or five hundred thousand dollar grant with East Tennessee Development. Uh, we've ran into another slight, s- problem with the state. I've told a couple of you this. I got an email last week, they did a, the state did a phase one environmental walkthrough six weeks ago. And due to that, it's kind of kicked up, they're requesting a phase two because back in the mid to early seventies, there was a fuel tank to the corner of the building closest to the, uh, Fire Association building. Uh, our historian Bill remembered that tank was taken out in nineteen seventy-eight, so that's how long it's been gone.
He dug it out.
Probably, but they requested a phase two, which we have s- since been debating with them. A phase two would cost probably between ten to fifteen thousand dollars and probably take several months. But we actually went on T D, and this was T D request is, we actually, Bill did, went on T D's website and found documentation from where that was removed by the contractor, named the contractor, that it had been mitigated and closed out in seventy-eight. So we have sent that to T D, their own records to show that, that this has already been done. They haven't heard anything yet. So that's some of the red tape we deal with, um.
We made a decision on paving yet, or we're going to get to pave or not pave?
Well, yes, yes and no. We, me and Dwayne talked about it today. Uh, we're looking at, we, we've got to pay J D R N L Parkway, Industrial Park, it's the worst, worst road in the city and that's about six hundred thousand. We're also looking at, um, Mariner Point Drive and we're also looking at some of the side streets down there with some of the alternative, uh, preservation, asphalt preservation that we talked about, the workshop. So we're planning, we're looking at, it'll probably be close to a million dollars. Now, I am requesting funding from another government body for about three, three hundred and fifty thousand of that. Uh, I'll know probably by bid June. So our plan is, is, is waiting to find out what happens with that, is to have a plan together and hopefully be able to bring bids to council no later than the July meeting to pay, do some paving in early, early fall, which is a good time to do it.
Did you ever get to do a cost comparison between the regular asphalt and this, this what I call new asphalt?
Um, some of what we were looking at was about, about fifty percent cheaper. And we got some roads and, and that's why I'm saying Mariner Point would be a good spot for them because we got some roads are in very good condition. These preservation methods are supposed to expand the lifespan several years of them and if we can do it at, at much lower costs.
Oh, yeah. Are we still looking at, uh, June for traffic controls up toward one twenty-two?
You're talking the traffic signals?
Yeah.
We got a letter two weeks ago, the cabinets now have been delayed till August. Of course, we've got everything else up, we're just waiting.
It must be.
It got lost on the boat.
I think we approved those last February.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Roger? Thanks, Roger. Uh, any old business before us? Any new business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Please adjourn.